Good evening, we're going to open the March fifth, two thousand twenty five Select Board meetings. Our first order of business is the organization meeting of the Select Board as the new Select Board. Congratulations to Alan and Richard. Thank you for sharing. We need to elect the Chair, a Vice Chair, a Clerk. Adopt rules and procedures, set time and date of the scheduled meetings. Designation of newspaper for notices and set the mileage rate for the coming year. The board's pleasure.
Shall I go ahead and start? I for Chair, I nominate Linda Mark.
Do you have anyone else with nominations for Chair? Are we noticed all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Go carry it, thank you. election of Vice Chair?
I'll make the motion that we nominate Michael.
I'll second that. Any other nominations? All those in favor?
Aye.
Question of Clerk?
Who?
Clerk.
I, I I nominate Richard. Oh, he is a little low you.
Well, I have to change the tag.
That's why you get the nomination. Say, I appear to know.
Without a steering wheel?
Yes.
Any other nominations? Hearing all those in favor? I opposed, so carry it. Adopt rules and procedure. Rules and procedure that we have on every year. The show has updated them, you have one there?
That's mine.
Whatever they are, I make a nomination that we approve them. The same as
They're the same, it's around what we signed for the last five years, except for we took out posting notices at the Woke at Store because they just blow up and we're going to post. We actually been posting them at the library, so that's the only other change we've made?
Yes.
Okay, so Richard's right, I want you to accept the Select Board rules of procedure.
I'll second.
You'll second? Any further discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carry it. Set date and time of regular scheduled meetings. I'm happy with Wednesdays, first and third at six.
Same about July, nothing changed yet.
I'm asking, this is your opportunity.
I make a motion that you please I'll second that.
Okay.
Follow me.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carry it. Designation of newspaper for notices. You have the choice of the Hardwood Present, which is online, or the Using Citizen, which is paper.
Is there one that is less expensive than the other? Oh, yes.
I was gonna say, yeah, Hardwood Present is strictly online.
That's what I said, it's just online.
Yeah. I would go with it, I used to say it, Using Citizen. I think it's home to have greater reach. It's all worthwhile.
Is that the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Same as that, Using Citizen. All those in favor? I oppose, so carry it.
Yes, I did, make the motion. Clerk.
That's my answer, and you were going to bring that for medical use.
Yes, so this year, this past year, we've been paying point six five 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 cents. Federal and state seventy cents for price of the year rule.
Seventy cents? Make a motion that we set the rate at seventy cents.
In February, you say? I mean, now? Not in that case. Not specifically, okay.
The board is starting us now.
And we, do we have flexibility in that?
I can see why not.
Makes sense to me, it was a matchup first of all. I got it.
Beginning to like, and then who seconded? No one?
No one, yeah.
Second?
I'll second it.
That too. All those in favor of setting the mileage rate of seventy cents per mile? Using your private cars starting July first, two thousand twenty five, say aye? Opposed, so carry it. Adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none? Google of the Select Board Ministers, February nineteenth, two thousand twenty five. Make a motion to approve?
That was from all asked meeting.
I'm watching here. Make a motion we approve this.
Second?
Do we have any discussion? Corrections, additions? Hearing none, then, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carry it. One, thank you, and two. This is time for comments from the community. You have any comments?
I'd like to make a comment about the responsiveness of the Sheriff's Department. I put up some signs, everybody was putting up signs at work. I put up some signs on my property. Was called and said they were run over, so I went down. Well, I called the Sheriff's Department. And said somebody ran over my signs, they said to get back to me. Went down, took some pictures. I drove down to Kurt's, Kurt was outside fixing his electrical system. I slipped on the roadside and asked Kurt, Kurt, could I talk to you? Kurt said no. I said, well, I just wanted to ask you if it's possible that you could tell people that it's not nice to run over people's signs. Kurt yelled out to his wife and said, call nine one one. So Kurt, is this the same event that you were talking about at town meeting?
Hmm. In a way about, mine was, what's happening is, we pay for patrol. You don't pay for them to come to every disturbance, we're paying for patrol. My point was two hundred and seventy-five thousand plus dollars. If there's a major crime in Hyde Park, Johnsons, Hainbridge, they're going to show up to that and not do patrolling. Okay, so why are we paying that for patrolling and not getting the trolling?
Okay, but it seemed like your point was that, I won't go into what you thought, but it seemed like you were saying they are not responsive. So, I talked to you, you called your wife, said call nine one one, I sat down beside the road for three to five minutes. Decided that that was, you know, they weren't, I asked your wife, are they coming? She didn't say anything. So, I went home, called the sheriff, the sheriff was responsive, he was down the hogback road. He said, Bruce, I'll meet you at Town Attorney, at the post office in a few minutes. He came up, met me at the post office, discussed it with me, asked my point of view. I told him, he went down, he talked to you, Kurt. And he came, talked to you for a while, he comes back up and says, Bruce, Kurt's not going to press charges, but please stay away from Kurt. I said, fine. So, they were very responsive. And I can complain about the service whatsoever. That's pretty much it. So that's, that's my point of view on that whole, how responsive is the Sheriff's Department? They were very responsive to me. And it seems like it wasn't a long time before they were responsive to you, Kurt. That's all I have to say.
Thirty minutes from the time they left Hogback to get to my house.
That's fine, you said twenty-five, but that's, whatever. They were talking to me, they were responsive, that's all I have to say.
I'm not talking about the response on any major crime. What I'm stating is, if there's a major crime, they're not going to patrol, we are paying for patrol. If there's a major crime, we don't get the controlling. But why are we paying this kind of money? And there, and we're not getting that service?
I think we are getting the service.
Well, let me put it this way. You go down and you set by Jones Road, and see how long it takes you to get out there without getting clipped at five in the morning. Those guys are doing forty-five to fifty miles an hour through town. And they're not stopping them. Why? Because they're not here doing patrolling.
All I'm speaking to is my own experience with murder, and just, that was my thing in town meeting.
That's the way I feel.
Can I say this? What, you guys are just talking about this? Did, has, have we considered one of those flashing speed limit signs? Hit for the village?
We can, it's state, it's state highway, we can't do anything. We can, we can ask them, we've even asked them for crosswalks and lowering the speed limit, and you've got nowhere.
Okay.
Right, everything would, has to go through the, that's them, you know, too.
And then, the part that surprises me, and this is right from at the time of this minage, he said until, when people are killed, trying to get out of a driveway, then we put up a, isn't sign. A two people's life worth fifty dollars for a sign?
I simply wanted people to understand that my feeling about the Sheriff's Department was different than yours. And we used to sit in front of two hundred people or something and told them a story. It's not the whole story, that's all.
But we're still paying for a service that we're not getting. I don't know that we're not getting it.
Okay, we have differences of opinion and spirit and faith of democracy, and we can share those feelings. Think we'll move on. Okay?
Do you have a comment or question for us? So, everybody knows that the last three years I've done a live stream of town meetings. Yesterday, my little technical glitch right at the start happened to be that I needed to update some software. Because I hadn't opened that software since town meeting the year before. And then it ended up costing me a couple dollars, and I wanted to know if it would be allowable for me to submit that receipt for any kind of help, since I basically volunteered everything. I didn't know if there's
It's a double dollar to me.
Sixty, it was like sixty-four dollars.
I think so, I think Belinda has this extra election money that's floating around that she doesn't know what to do with. I'm sure we could try to
That sounds like, that sounds election related.
Yeah, I think you could probably ask her if she'd
Okay.
Be willing to do that.
I can drop off a, write a copy of the receipt with Belinda.
Yeah, I'll need to make sure we talk to her first.
Okay. Great, thank you, that's all. I updated the streaming software I use. And you know, if I was using it professionally for other things, I wouldn't ask, but it's the only thing I've been doing in the last year, is using it for that.
That's fair.
So.
How many people watch?
Six people were watching live, but a lot of people have watched it since.
Oh.
So, I think that actually is it's nice to have it live, for the people who want to watch it, but I think the replay being available immediately is almost as valuable, so people can check it out during the day.
And watch it, that is, in live?
What happened, oh, yeah, David couldn't watch it right at that time, and and also, you could, you know, watch it at a delay and catch up at any point. So, you'd started late, and then we had that fifteen minute break, which I think was a little long, but I think you could just catch up to the school board.
Well, thank you for doing that.
Yeah, it's really, it's I, I really like doing it, I like making it accessible to more people out there, I think it's, it makes, it makes me happy to be able to.
Okay. We have a minute or two to our public, opening our public hearing for the Woke at Wastewater ordinance, public comments and adoption. I think maybe we can you have three minutes, I think you can begin. Begin. JB, are you here to, instead of Seth?
Hi, well, as far as I know, he's on his way, just talked to him a little bit ago.
All right, then I guess we will wait, because I thought he was coming.
Yeah, I think he, it's certainly my understanding from about twenty minutes ago that he was on his way to you.
Board doesn't mind, why don't we take up some of these Select Board Action Review? I had a request from the Forest Committee, if we could set our barbecue date. Because they would like to be able to set the date for the celebration of the forest around the same time, but they were hoping to be able to advertise it at the barbecue, so people would know that. They wanted it to be told. And I didn't realize, but you said that you can never come, because it's your wedding anniversary.
In fact, it is.
So, I didn't know if you had a suggested date, so that you could maybe participate? If you said something. I feel that it's good that people are back from vacation, but it's also bad, because it's seems like a lot of people take vacation then right after Labor Day, too, at the same time.
Not that the world should revolve around me, but we're around the twenty-third and twenty-fourth of August. And
Well, I could on Friday.
But the fifth would work. Again, not the world should revolve around me, it's August, you said, I remember.
But that would be after Labor Day, wouldn't it?
Yeah. I'm talking about staple four.
You're here then?
I'm at fifth.
Oh.
Yeah, the anniversary is the second, so we usually take off the weekend before.
I would, I like the fifth. Personally. When is Labor Day the second?
First, sister.
Oh, the first? Well, it could be the fifth, or it could be sometime the last couple weeks in August. It's the board pleasure, it's not up to me.
If you said it sooner, and there's a rainy event, we'd go to the Labor Day.
Yeah, we did that one, yeah, had to freeze. It's eighty years on. So, this August twenty-second, August twenty-ninth. So, August twenty-ninth would be Labor Day weekend, that would probably not be good. So, August twenty-seventh or September fifth?
I think Kurt has a great idea, I'll shoot for the early one, in case we need the late one.
Okay.
So, we're talking August twenty-first, rain date be the
August twenty-second. Rain date August fifth. I, September fifth, so.
The calendar, anybody, right now?
Okay.
It's so important, starting at five.
Yes. Okay, well, I'm set.
Level.
Right.
Go on.
Okay. You will open our public hearing for the Woke at Wastewater ordinance. It's our opportunity to take public comments, if we have any last questions, and hopefully, we're able to adopt it. Tonight? You want, anyone? Seth or JB, do you have any comments before we begin?
Um, no, just this, the committee and worked on an initial draft, the Select Board has reviewed this several times. The primary discussion of the Select Board earlier meetings was on the opt-out language, which was revised to but not require engineering review, required information about well shields that's going to be readily available on the plants. The few items, there were, from legal review, there was a question about the statutory reference under violations. There's no change, except the attorney suggested including both the chapter and subheading number, so the subheading was added. There was a question about a preliminary review, which is essentially, it allows or they will be making allocations to do a preliminary review before that heavy engineering. The draft that you all reviewed included a statement that that could be used as evidence for capacity. The attorney flagged that as questioning what the purpose of that was. JB explained that that was for like other permitting financing. And so, the attorney just suggested that that clarifying clause be added. And then, the question of what happens if there's question about the well shields, and it just, that enables the Select Board to ask for independent technical review if someone questions of the well shield, which will be mapped, I think it's unlikely to happen, but just clearly outline what you do with us. So, those are, I don't think changes in substance, they're, they're kind of clarifications of process, but do want to be clear that needs to the Select Board understand. There. It started in the middle, kind of, because all of you have been part of the story up to now, but I understand it through members of the public who have questions, I'm happy to provide more clarification of how we ended up here.
Something you'd like to add, JB?
No, I think, you know, there was a lot of, a lot of good work put in on careful consideration of how to make the opt-out responsible for the town, but realistic if somebody really wants to keep a septic. And, yeah, I mean, I think it's, I think it's genuinely ready to go. But again, happy to walk anybody through different provisions.
Allison, do you have any comments?
Not at this time, we're just here to listen.
Okay. Monica? Board? Or the committee? Any comments?
This, this, we're on the, the change, the most recent changes that we've been within. And so, we just want to make sure that the board is, is happy with the revisions that we tried to look at a good strategy here, based on the comments from the past meeting. Discuss this, but we think we came up with this, but we just wanted to make sure.
What was the reason that you wanted twenty-five hundred square feet for a new system? For not opting out? What made you come up with that figure?
Over to you. Yeah, but JB, you want to address that?
That one.
Sure, no, that's, it's, it's a good question. That is the minimum area for sizing, that is the minimum surface area that would be remotely appropriate, given Vermont soils and everything else, for construction of a, a replacement system. And so we, the, the twenty-five hundred was really intended to be a bit clearer and a bit more objective with the standards for that, so that it didn't require full-blown engineering for someone who wanted to demonstrate that they could keep their onsite system. So, it's intended to it's intended to make it clearer and simpler for a landowner to demonstrate that they have the conditions onsite for not connecting. But it's based in the realities of design.
I think it would come back down to the one having it engineered by a firm. I've seen some that are much smaller, being a mound system.
Sure, okay, so backing up to these demonstrations, there are there are two ways by which a property owner can demonstrate that they should not be required to hook up to the system. This is only for properties within the service area. You have two options. One, your system was built after two thousand oh seven, and it's operated appropriately ever since then, it hasn't been a failed system. The other is, it predates the two thousand oh seven rules. And it has never failed, it's outside the floodplain, and then we got down to should property owners who wish to opt out, who have a pre-two thousand oh seven system, be required to get an engineer to engineer a system in order to demonstrate that they don't need to hook up? Or can we create some kind of as-of-right situation that doesn't require an engineer to come in? So that's why we went to this, you know, three A Little Three. Was intended to save those property owners who don't want to connect, to give them an objective means of demonstrating that they've got sufficient site area to meet the rules. And I would call your attention to the very last line on the, you know, not encumbered by a well that if we see a conflict, Select Board can request an independent review. But this was intended to be helpful to property owners. Originally, we basically said, you've got to hire an engineer and demonstrate that your system, that you can build a fully compliant replacement system. We got pushback that that was too costly and too burdensome for property owners who wanted to opt out.
I personally think twenty-five hundred is, square feet is irresponsible, I mean, you're going to have that much area torn up installing a smaller system, and twenty-five hundred square feet has got to fit the tank, the D-box, and distribution field. I mean, that's, that's a big ask, to try and engineer something in that small footprint. I don't know, I, I'm the only reason that we had to do this, and I think twenty-five hundred is, is is responsive, but it's fair.
Well, like I said, if, if it came down to some of the other systems I've seen in town, they're mound systems.
Yeah.
They're no bigger than this room, completely.
And I, I think that that was her point there, where, you know, if there's a conflict between Her point there where, you know, if there's a conflict between design plans and, and whatever. You know, if you want, if someone in the service area that didn't have twenty five hundred square feet. Wanted to prove that they could fit a system in order to. They could bring that to us and it would be up to either, I don't know who's going to control it, the select board or wastewater board, but it would be up to them to determine whether or not.
Okay, I, I think we need to be careful here. If you look at, and thank you for bringing that up, um, we're on page. We're on page twelve. And I'm going off the one from the website to make sure our pages are the same. It's page twelve. And we get to private onsite sewage systems. There we go. Up, up a tiny. Thank you. That's perfect. Okay. In order for someone. Who is within the service area, this has no bearing on anyone outside the service area. But for those properties within the service area. Who have an onsite system built before twenty oh seven. Who want to continue using that system and not connect. Little three is all about determining that there's room on that site. To build a fully compliant replacement system. And that construction of that fully compliant replacement system would be outside anyone's well shield. So. Originally, to meet that test, to opt out. The language had said, you must get an engineer to demonstrate that your site. Can accommodate a full replacement system, which would mean it would have to be outside the well shields. What we've done here is attempt to make this objective. And as Seth said in his introduction, information that any property owner can figure out without an engineer. In order, again, this is to opt out for the old properties with older systems. Our best professional recommendation, if you don't want people to have to go get an engineer. Is that you have twenty five hundred square feet of land area and that you demonstrate again, using readily available mapping. That it's outside anyone's well shield. I loathe to say this, but Linda can't reach through and strangle me. If you wanted to put in an or. You wanted to make a little four that said. Or. The applicant to opt out submits engineering. Demonstrating that the site can accommodate a fully compliant replacement system. You could do that. That would give people, they would either have to hire an engineer and spend, you know, several thousand dollars demonstrating that their site can. Install a fully compliant replacement system. Or they can meet our numeric test under three without hiring an engineer. I would just remind everyone though, that. When this system is built and operating, properties within the service area. If their system malfunctions or fails, will have the option to connect to a municipal system. Um, what this is all intended to prevent and, and connecting to a municipal system is going to be. Just. Orders of magnitude less expensive than installing a new replacement system on their site. But if people are going to opt out now, you want to make sure that there's the ability to continue to provide. Wastewater safely and in a, in a safe sanitary condition on their site. So if you really want to give people another option to have an engineer design a system that they may never need. And that they wouldn't have to put in because they could connect to the system. That would be a change we could make.
But, but doing that, you may also open up. The ability to, um. For somebody who did all of that, there's no state statute that says the engineering can't encroach into somebody else's land. So that would, that would eliminate.
Well, you can't go into well shields. I'm sorry, no, you can't, you can't.
You can't go into well shields. So what I'm saying is if, if the, if the containment, uh, contamination area of the well, the. Septic shield were to go across the property line, the engineering will allow that. You can engineer a system. Where the, the, I keep wanting to call it containment area, but.
Isolation is.
The isolation distance can, can cross a property line. If we allow engineering documents. They could theoretically engineer a system that would prohibit a neighboring property owner from drilling a well.
Right.
This town has done a great job over the course of the last few years, determining how to deal with wastewater, but we don't have a municipal water supply. I don't know that I would be for. Allowing people to engineer something that would limit the placement of, of drinking water.
I know that's happening, but.
I think that that would be.
Did that just to prevent that from happening. They drove a well.
So I, I just, that is, that's a beautiful option. I just myself, I. It goes against the other thing. I was thinking about people's personal rights to do what they want on their property. The way the state is, has got their rules written now, you can. You can't put your isolation distance across property lines.
Yep.
Well, being one, it's in this service area. My problem is, and I'm afraid of it, just like Johnson and Plainfield and several other towns. When this system gets damaged, we're not talking fifty or sixty dollars. We're talking millions. This is all going to fall onto the users.
We do not, we are not building a system like Johnson. I don't know where the other ones are.
If the plumbing, which is the pipe, gets damaged like Plainfield. They're looking at lots of dollars.
I, I'm sorry, but that's not been the historic experience of Vermont towns that have had a system of this scale and this type. Through our major flooding disasters. This is not, as Linda said, a system, anything like Johnson's. These are small diameter pressure systems. When they've been damaged, it's a small repair.
Their, their whole treatment plant was literally in the Bronx. This is just literally a pipe. That you can place a lot easier than a wastewater plant.
I'm saying the pipe, if the pipe, you're crossing three rivers and streams.
No, I'm sorry, but that speculation is simply incorrect with how these systems are designed and the experience of the river crossing damage that we've seen. In ninety eight, in Irene, in twenty three and twenty four, in the other systems with this kind of pipe. These diameters of pipe and river crossings. It is not a millions of dollars repair. It's not even millions of dollars really to build the whole thing. You will not have a treatment plant. These are questions that have been asked and answered about these systems. And they are, and, and I would also add, they're really not relevant to the ordinance. So. Let's focus, if we need to go back on the facts of those systems, we can. But this is not, that, that's not a relevant or accurate comparison. As someone who's been finance, you've been responsible for the financial management of those systems.
And if it's a vulnerable crossing, it could be sleeved. I mean, I'm, I'm sure as a part of the design process, they're, they're going to find ways to protect. Any area that may be vulnerable.
I think it's worth, I, I think we, you know, there, um. It's worth having Peter and the design team address. And the precautions that are being built for the, the crossings, because I know this is a question that has come up from members of the community. Um, you know, just as an example, and not being an engineer, I want Peter to provide, um, more, but in terms of. The discussion of the placement of the crossing on the Swiss River, and a lot of back and forth would be trans about. Doing that in the way where it's, it's the least vulnerable. Um, there was discussion about the death at the, um. The fire station where there had been erosion from the rail trail. So I think this is a, a relevant question for, um, when we get to this sixty percent design plan review. And if there's additional, um, you know, additional protections that the board wants to consider. Um, I think that would be a good point to have that, that discussion with the engineers.
And the sixty percent design is, is coming within weeks.
Yes.
Thankfully, it will be presented to the board.
I'm sure the state in any review process has already gone through and took a look at, figured out for all of this. What they want, their protections ready in for the flood protections, because they aren't going to permit. Any new system that doesn't have flood protections built in.
It, it is from a, from a, uh, flood, it has to be built to the five hundred year. It has to be floodproof for five hundred year, um. So the, the tanks have to be ballasted. There has to be backflow control back there. The, um. Panels have to be elevated. So all of those, and I think these are all really important questions to make sure that if you don't have those. Those costs falling on the, the town or on users, um. But that's, if you have an opportunity coming up to have a, for, you know, a more detailed discussion of that.
And one last, one last point, if it did turn out to be a substantial expense, you know, the whole village is gone. And we have to replace a mile and a half pipe. I would assume being public infrastructure, we treated no differently than a road, we would be able to apply for some kind of help from some agency. Because even if a federal agency doesn't exist, there will have to be some kind of something that towns and states can fall back on. I mean, I, I understand the fear that right now there is a golden hatchet walking for our federal government, but. There'll have to be something. There has to be something.
Well, at the last, last board meeting, Mr. Patrick Dury, we both stated it would be up to the users to get a role.
I believe we also stated, we might also stated the same thing about.
I do not.
If it's public infrastructure opens up a lot of avenues that you wouldn't have as private. That you're a fire district and you have issues, your users have to pay all of it if you go near.
There one thousand percent is an opportunity for a damage or for an upgrade or for something to happen where the users. May, at the discretion of whatever board exists at that time. May have to apply for some kind of financing.
Or they want to upgrade or fix it or make it, or add to it later if they ever want.
Right. I, I hate to use this example, uh, but. It is, and we're, I understand we're talking about the current structures and there's a lot of potential disruption, um. It is, and both from state funding, like the clean water revolving funds. And FEMA, federal money. More seamless, I don't want to use the phrase easier, but more seamless. To drive down emergency repair funds for public infrastructure than private infrastructure, the. Repairs that Lern has been able to do, the private wastewater systems are entirely dependent on, um. Big support from big foundations, um, big statewide foundations. I don't know if I want to say this, but I am going to. If La Moyole County had experienced impacts, but Washington County, Barrymont failure had not. I'm not sure there would have been the same level of private foundation support for those kinds of repairs, um. And that is what has made it possible for Lern to do things like help people replace septic systems. I, I, I think it's. I'm less certain that that money for private repairs will be there than I am that public support at the state level will be there for public. And I don't want to give that news to anybody. I wish we could say that it will always be like it was out in July twenty twenty three in the world. Why not help, but I don't know. There to that on the side of that. We're not going anywhere. And if there is damage to Woke at Public Infrastructure. Johnson's will be doing exactly what we did when Flatiron Road was being missed by D-Trans and be calling everybody in Montpelier until somebody gets up here. Helping fix it. Regardless of what happens in Washington, that's what we're going to do.
And if you get that much water through here to do that much damage, how much of Marsport is gone? And you going down through there?
Yeah, I, I do, I do want to clarify though, that any statement that I made about applying for financing was as well. As well as. You know, any kind of other financial aid that may exist. It would not be my position for as long as I'm on this board. To tell the users, you know what I'm saying? You guys have got to figure out how to fix your own system. It is public infrastructure. In that vein, I believe the town has, has a duty to make sure that it hasn't washed away. I just, I just want to clarify that that's, if that was what I said and misspoke, um. What I meant was, there is an opportunity. There are eventualities that could happen that would lead the users to seek financing. I don't believe catastrophic failure is, is one of those. That's something that the town is going to have to help with. LCPC is going to have to help with FEMA, whatever agencies exist. Picking out the.
Or anything you want to do later. If you do, you can look at what your funding sources, programs or grants or something like that that are out at the time too. Help lower it.
But that has nothing to do with it. The ordinance, I mean, the voters voted that we're moving forward and we're moving forward. Um, try to answer your concerns and so forth that. You know, as we go through the designs, um, with the engineers, but, um, this is the next step. That the voters have authorized us to move forward with. To get the system working and in place. So any other comments on the ordinance? Not, um, I just point out, um, that we'll make a motion hopefully to adopt this. Uh, I want to point out that on page twelve, the date of the design will be filled in. Once the design is finished, but we don't have that date at this point. Also on page thirty four, the schedule of sewer uses and charges and fees. That will be changed annually, um, when the sewer commissioners meet and. Termin the cost, uh, what is going to cost to. From the system for the year. And it, and it, and we won't know really until we know. The more people who sign up to use it, the less it's going to be. Um, for your user charge. And we don't know. What that is at this point, because we're in the process of collecting, um. Those signup forms. Those the only two blank things on this? Yeah.
This was believed, as long as it was, I would happily make a motion that we adopt the ordinances as.
So we have a motion to accept, uh, do we have any further? Question before we vote? Very none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close. So carry. Thank you. I will work with Michelle, um, on following the. Statutory procedure for. Ordinance. Terms of posting, putting in the paper, copies around.
First, the board mentioned that. Bradley, the committee has, uh, that we work with readily to update all the information on our website, including the. The ordinance, um, so folks know that it's a must read off the website.
Thank you, and I will close the public hearing.
All right. Thanks, y'all. Pet jacks for me.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. You have applies to the industry before.
Um, I think that it's you that is up here, but if you'd like to repeat it or again.
So we won't be having Kurt with us tonight, he just said the Fraser Associated Roads. Project moved the obligation this week, that is the final project of thirteen. They've all been obligated with FEMA. Remaining claims will be for interest on the Wooka one million dollar line of credit. Michelle and I and Belinda and Kurt met with FEMA to understand. How we can claim some of the interest on that loan we took out. With the completion of the final scheduled project, Fraser Road, the town can start processing the interest claim. And he will start working on the category Z, which is the administrative box that's done in the very one. So he's predicting another thirty days before final closing of the DR forty seven twenty. I think it'll be more than that, because then when that happens, there's other stuff that has to be done, but we'll take care of it on this end. That's good news. Received about a million four hundred from me. Kurt just sent me the list of what each project costs, I have the list of the obligated costs and you can kind of. Uh, plug them in and we'll see where we stand. Maybe next week.
Hopefully it can be written in flag.
Yeah.
Um, so we had an employee, it's one of the, it's like, we're not getting pretty far on the ice. At front, um, we submitted it to work for some, um, so, yeah. Um, we have, I, I'd like to get the, the dates up for the ethics training, I think neither April second. But we do have a party, separate party happening between, and you guys will get your invitations soon. Um, happening between twelve and one thirty-ish, um. This ethics training will be, you'll need to meet one hour prior to the meeting, so training is forty five minutes. And then you each need to sort of answer your own questions and submit those, then you can give your certification, so just enter state notes that. You've had your, your training.
Do other boards need to attend?
Um, I would think that we would have probably other committees, yeah. Um, but they can take it on their own too, they don't need to be part of this, they can schedule it. This is primarily for the select board, but if any of the other committees are prepared, that's. Take it as well, so we can either do it the, um, April second or April sixteen.
Does it during this level or the hour prior, you suggested we do it an hour prior, oh, we need it five. Whatever the board wants to do. It was such a.
Just know that there's a party going on that day, so you might be here a while. Or coming back.
In here to annoy you.
It's April second.
For a second, it is, okay, I'll set it up.
Make a day of it.
Um, I have met, we have a new project manager for FEMA's month four, his name is Cory, wonderful guy, he's really, it goes together. Um, he's already, we've completed the debris removal project, we included John Joe with that, but then he brought to my attention. Um, that John, John Joe's suit is primarily debris removal, it was just the town doing the work, we weren't having many. Contractors, but he said that because the primary portion of that debris removal was, um. Off of a private property, we can't submit it, um, we didn't stand to lose that much money. So I did submit the Elmore Pond Road, um, there was a lot of debris removal there. And we were able to submit for debris removal only because it's a federal eight highway. So, um, I signed that on Friday, um. And we stand to earn if, so the total amount is for seventeen thousand thirty one dollars. We would get seventy five percent if all of that passes through, which equates to twelve thousand seven hundred seventy three dollars. Are out of pocket expenses for the, the contractors for that particular. Um, portion of debris cleanup was eleven thousand two hundred twenty six, so we're kind of pretty much breaking open on that. A little bit to the paper for the road crew. Um, the, the, at the transportation advisory committee. Um, I don't know, Linda, do you want to?
No, I'll use dark.
Okay, so the state transportation budget has been. Suggested to be cut, um, and, and I don't have a front of these possibly, I don't know much, but. The transportation advisory, what is his name, Eric, what's Eric's last name? With Cambridge, who's gonna.
Roseanne, he's the town minister at Cambridge, he is going to do some lobbying for the towns, um.
Um, people are legislating, I believe in two to three weeks, so he's seeking information, basically the same information. We've provided to Vermont, takes the cities and towns, pretty much wanting to know, um. Uh, they want us to pull together a list of projects that would be expected to be needed in the next five to ten years. I know that North Wall Cut Road is a major one, um, we can come up with other maybe bridges that we're looking at.
Other than the list we gave you from the VLCT, is that where you're saying?
Yeah, this is a five to ten years, VLCT was just one of your most immediate. So if you think of something other than North Wall Cut Road, which is uh, we're dating Culvers. Um, and I don't really know what the planning commission is pulling together for that, but. Um, we have the next week and half, if you could get some ideas to me, it didn't seem like they needed specifics, like even amount, but. I think it's important to throw in an amount like we're repaving, um, Dylan estimates it's about five hundred thousand per mile. To repave, um, and, and replace the culvers, to, to go down and not just do the, the.
Re-engineer the Route fifteen and the Wooka.
So.
It's a separate, I see that's a major problem.
Um, as far as a highway department, I had advertised for the new road queue position, there's been no response yet, however, Dylan has been asking. Around, um, Reno has decided he will stay with this through April twenty fifth. Um, he is, we, we asked him if he was interested, he's working for, he's, he has his own company. And since his last summer, he might, if the position is still open, apply in the fall, um. Uh, Dylan again, has been asking. Certain people and, and so far, there's been no interest except. Or is interested in, but he does not have a CDL, and so I just want to put this out there. Um, is it possible that we offer to pay for CDL training for the right candidate? Um, and it costs between sixty five hundred and seventy five hundred dollars for a class A. Uh, you would get the candidate to sign a two to three year employment commitment to the town or even more, or to the board. Um, or they would have to pay back the training in full if they left before that commitment was completed. Um, there's training in Albany, the Albany Newport area, and there's one down there. So the Albany Newport area is sixty five hundred and the other one is seventy five. It's like, um, I was thinking that we could pay for part of it. Depending on if or when we fill this job, we don't fill it right away, but we are saving roughly. Two thousand a month insurance, health insurance, right now. I don't know if that's the way we can borrow, I knew those things around, so I'm just trying to think of. Ways to, to maybe get this paid for, because honestly, there are so many, there are probably six towns in this vicinity who will pay for it.
You told me earlier, this is what I did think about it. I thought about the idea of, of them splitting half of, half of it with them. Still having the contract and paying us back, you know, on each paycheck or something. Because someone doesn't usually have that kind of money.
How with this idea? They have to take and get the CDL, pass it. Contracted five years and every year a proportion is knocked off, and at the end of five years is. Paid for. How's that? I mean, that way it's, it's, it's there, if they quit. If one year, they gotta pay eighty percent. And it keeps going that way until after five years and it's zero.
Yeah, I mean, it could be as simple as a weekly deduction in their payroll, should we choose to do that and then.
Rather than. There's several options, I just think that one is more of an incentive.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I think that there could be some discussion on how we structure that and, and what the hourly rate would be, I mean, if, if he did hire somebody. And provide them with a CDL, I would think that our rate, our pay rate would want to be.
This would go up.
Yeah.
But then it would still give them that incentive to stay.
But contractually with the union, we're limited to a base at what, twenty five something or other?
Oh, wait a minute, he doesn't belong to the union, does he have to?
If we hired him.
Why?
I don't know.
You don't have to join the union, do you?
You don't think you have to, but if he doesn't, we have to break the union, if they require.
Well, I hope he doesn't.
From my understanding, you have to have three members, and that's why they pulled in the foreman to have that third number.
I think that's aimed for right now, but we don't ask for it. Yeah, we're hiring, I don't, I don't think that we, I, I don't know, um. I just wonder what that would mean for the remaining, for what they would be willing to.
I was just thinking, will we keep their contracts for the next three years as what they were, and I guarantee that was the next three years. I don't, I mean, I don't think it's fair, finite contract, and then you're made on.
Yeah, I want to say that, yeah, I, I don't know how any of that would work, we're dealing in a lot of what ifs.
But we're still trying to find out, I, I still want to see some paperwork where the foreman can be in the union.
I have not found anybody that can support that.
Right, not just, there's nobody supporting, and I think the union should be able to produce something to support that. I mean, anyone can say anything and do anything and get away with it, you're not on them.
I about, I ever blessed this, but it took a couple of times to get it before and then I had to be educated. And I'm not, not, in a, in a not so friendly way.
Back to the original, I, I would be open to providing training to a candidate if they were the right candidate.
Right.
And how we structure that would be something, could be along the same lines as, as a percentage annually or a weekly deduction. And you get this as the balance to, however, I would be open to that.
Would you, so how would that look, would we hire them and they would take training on our time?
So, I think you've got to be.
Six weeks.
They don't have any salary course for that, I thought you could do it in a week.
No.
Well, we only need a B, we only need a B. I would love a class A, but we only need a B.
So, I can tell you, as somebody who trains class B drivers, it's almost impossible. To deal with a state wedding in a gun less than two to three months.
Don't you need it for the head, the, the, for those big trucks, you don't need it, those are still underweight.
The only thing.
Twenty four thousand.
Twenty six, and the only thing they wouldn't be able to, class B would let them run over twenty six thousand, the only thing you'd need the A for is if they were in a truck. That was over twenty six thousand with a trailer pulling more than ten thousand pounds, so the only thing they wouldn't be able to do is move our excavator. And Dylan's a class A holder, and I don't, I think Joey might be as well. Not sure about that.
I think it's cheaper than for class B, I just looked at class A.
And, and again, if, if somebody applied with a class A, in my mind, they would be given preference, but. If we're providing the training, I would think class B is sufficient, that's, that's all you need to run the trucks. You as a trainer, you're saying it's, it's a three month window.
And so the state brings it really, so there's waiting grades, you have to make an appointment to get your permit. And then take the written test, then you have to pass them, if you don't, it's weeks before you can take the test, um. Then you have to go through federal engine driver and training program. Which doesn't have a specific set amount of hours of time tied to it, but there's pretty significant checklist. And you have to, you can't sign up for a road test till you can have the permit, and those tend to be four to six weeks out. And, um, you know, then you want to make sure your driver's well prepared, because if they fail that. Could be another four to six weeks out, right, so it's, this is one of the reasons CDL drivers are so hard to find. Is because it's really hard to create that.
So, in that vein, you know, obviously for us to, to foot the bill, we would have them sign an employment contract, but I also don't want to be paying. Two to three months of salary for them to not be able to perform the duties of the job, and even in the summertime. There aren't many tasks that take place that don't require. Uh, we do have brush cutting. We do have brush cutting, you know, and there's, there's always lower work, greater work, things like that. Anyway, so maybe tactically, you know what, maybe that's how we do that, stick them in the front truck, the post pounder.
You don't have a front.
But we have.
That's a real foul.
Well, that would. Yeah, so, you know, there, I guess there are things, there are tasks, but that does complicate the process of hiring somebody who. Who would be here full time for three months.
Or maybe they, uh, take the, the written permit on their own time, I know one of these programs, this friend of mine took it. He took the written, they, they had a walk-in plate, the written part of it.
Yeah.
And then it's pretty quick, so it was a total of six weeks, absolutely. Just start.
Yeah, it can.
If you got.
If everything goes according to plan, that is definitely possible. I've gotten, uh, a school bus driver done in four weeks. Um, it is also required, you cannot take your road test less than fourteen days from obtaining your permit. And appropriate, um, endorsements.
It's interesting because the training down in, um, Barry requires me to come in with a permit.
Yeah.
I think that that's a fair requirement, that knocks something off the checklist, I mean, with your partner.
But it's.
No, I mean, as far as coming into an employment contract with us.
I think there's also a training, the CDL's being built in. Um, I don't know for pricing, it's probably. I hear there might be a guy locally sometime in the next few months, in the pot city, so.
And just that, so would you train them on like a.
I mean, great, if, if you got your CDL B in a bus, you can drive a truck.
If they train them in the big room, like the big mats.
And the, the nice thing about that is they have manual transmissions, so we wouldn't be restricted to an automatic. The nice.
It's a nice feature for somebody that wants to take this skill and bring it somewhere else, but all of our trucks are automatic.
So, you know, that restriction wouldn't be ridiculous.
That's why I transferred to having such a hard time, they are all on standard, and to, to try to find a CDL driver that drives standard. And to, to try to find a CDL driver that drives standard. So the options of the position isn't available somewhere? We've been thinking, uh, finding out some options. We could work with this two staff and contact out from Grant where we are looking, I'm going to contact, um, uh, Larry Furno, I talked to him today and just like putting feelings out there and said, you know, hey, are you looking for any summer work? Maybe even thirty hours, whatever we can get somebody to come in for. He said, I wouldn't be opposed to it and we could ask, I mean, it's like, I haven't retired yet. I know he's seventy-nine, but he does stories work. Like he's very, very good. Um, so those are some of the options or the, uh, and, and under that, our crew, we do have the grant need that needs to happen with some replacement of culverts on East Hill. And then it sounds pretty much like we're going to get the better roads category D grant for the Elmore Pollen Road. And, and so we either just replace with the grant money and add as many culverts as we can. And then that's always a main target too, because the, the new level, so those are just the plans that we're kind of thinking about.
So the, the absolutely happens that have to be done with this summer regardless of what we have for staff. We've got the grant aid. We've got that other grant you just talked, talked about. We also have to figure out how we're going to haul sand. And then, you know, get our five thousand yards put out.
Oh, yeah. We have a whole list of, yeah, like they, they got a lot of tridges and signs, you know, that, they've got a little general maintenance, they've got a grading.
Just saying, just thinking out loud about how if we do not fill a position before summer, uh, a one-person crew is great for a grader, except for the way that our chloride system is set up. The grading is even a two-man operation at this point. Uh, so who's gonna, who's going to carry the boats? Who's going to haul the sand? If the two of them are tied up doing other maintenance work and they haven't filled the position.
Well, I'm sure they'll just make me, I, I don't know.
Just, just something has been on my radar the minute, because that was, that was Chan's day job during the summer was six hundred and seventy-two thousand trips a day. Uh, you know, filling his pockets with sand and dragging them over the pit. Uh, so just something that
That may then just be, so I, I think we have options. We it's kind of hard to know. You talk to certain people and then, you know, they're like, well, then hire me. You, you know what I mean? And that was not there yet. Um, but the, the town garage septic is filling in regularly and it has required pumping uh, both in January and February. And it's three hundred and seventy bucks a pump.
Is it the septic or the floor drains?
Uh, Dylan doesn't know. He thinks it might be filling in with groundwater. So we're proposing that, uh, we have an option to come out and take a look at it to see if the groundwater is flowing.
But is it the septic tank or is it the floor drains? Because of the system that floor drains pumped into.
I was told the septic tank would have
The septic tank is in back of the building.
When I was there, all that water comes from up there and is being filled. When I was in there the other day, it was, there was water running into a tank that is right underneath where Joey and Dylan typically park. Um, there used to be concrete barriers there to eliminate people parking both there and out back where Chan would historically park. Because that's the leach field, but, um, I'm not sure if those still exist. I haven't seen them. But when I was there, the, on Chan's last day, um, the tank that was filling was the floor drain tank.
What do you
The, the floor drain system that's in the garage.
Okay, oh, okay.
It, it, because it once upon a time, it used to daylight into the river and then greasy oily trucks draining into the river. So we put a tank in.
Even though one that Rashad told me that he was pumping out one day when he, uh, was at work in the garage.
January or February, he did one in January and one in February and it was Rashad's. Did he say what was coming out?
No, he said he was going to go do that tank in the floor, like he said.
So just a point of clarification, because we are dealing with a lot of wastewater things. I, I don't believe it's the septic system. I don't believe that it's I think it's the floor drain system, which is still three hundred and seventy dollars a hit.
I will ask, um, I'll get more clarification.
So the plan is to have an usher come in camera and then figure out what's going on?
That's, that was, yeah. Or they said snake it, but that doesn't make sense.
Yeah, we Camera and then snake it once you get it clean.
So it has to be pumped again?
If you want to see what's going on, you're going to have to clean it out with your camera and see what's going on. And there's just big holes in there and letting water in. You gotta tell you right where they are and fix it. You're not fixing
So is that something that will eventually be hooked into the wastewater system or no? Because there's oil.
No.
No, I'm thinking Just asking because you know, we have to replace it. I just want to know.
If, if I'm correct and it's the floor drain system, it will have to be another holding tank. You wouldn't want to pump that into your, your wastewater systems. The same way you wouldn't want to take runoff no street drains and put those in.
Or that from your sink. You don't want that.
If it is the septic system, which it sounds like, I'm pretty sure it isn't, but if it is before you
Yeah.
spend money on replacing it, talk to us because there are some rules when you're in the process of developing a public system that interim measures you can take. Please don't attach the floor drains to that.
Yeah, I thought about that. You know, if it was the septic tank, the whole set.
Yeah.
Even if you couldn't get one of those new ones and you put it in and then move it after or something. I'm not buying it. I already told Michelle I was not buying.
And there are actually state rules and processes to do exactly what they
Uh, if in fact it's the floor drain storage tank.
It's oil-water separated tank set up like parking lots have on.
I don't know what the cost of that is going to be and I don't know if we can, I don't want to say circumvent the rules, but I don't know if we can just do a holding tank with a pumping schedule instead of doing a separator. But whatever that turns out to be, that, that could be If it's just a tank, if they just have to pop a new poly tank in, the guys are equipped. They have all the equipment it takes to drop a new tank in there. Done.
Basically, also should not be parking where they're parking anymore?
That was why the barriers were paid, placed there all those years ago because plowing drives frost, damages underground infrastructure.
Uh, running over your septic field with a semi trap would not help it work properly generally, no.
Uh, but I have not seen first hand the tanks. I haven't seen the design. I have no idea where those where that stuff exists. So they may well be offering them away from them, not hurting them.
You know, we find those
I don't think any plans were to draw them.
No, I don't think so, but then it's registering that we've done something about the drainage report. And so I created this box. Found stuff, all found stuff.
If it exists, it exists in this box.
All the
That may be true for the town garages, but not the fire.
As, as far as it was explained to me, it's just the three, it's just the bays in the highway department that are tied into the system. I do not know why they're on fires.
Fire department, it, it's like you said, used to drain to the river. We poured concrete into it. It's no more.
It just doesn't drain.
Doesn't drain into the river anymore from the truck bays in the fire.
Yeah, where does it drain?
Nowhere.
Oh.
Want to do is sweep it off.
Yeah.
Wow. Takes a longer time to get there. That filtration.
Is this sometimes because they wash their vehicles? I mean, should they like?
No, uh, yes, that is where that water goes, but I wouldn't say that it's filling more excessively because they're washing. And I certainly wouldn't recommend washing less.
And they wouldn't be washing now, I don't think.
They should be washing now.
It should be washing, should be washing.
Or there's just a lot of debris that's coming in from this.
I don't know.
There could be a lot of junk in the bottom from the sand. You never know.
They should be pumping it though. Anything that makes its way into the tank should be sucked out with the, the super sucker.
It should be. It depends. It tends to
When, uh, when the tank is being pumped, any debris that's in the tank should leave as it's being
Okay.
Depends how much they backflush it technically. If you go suck, if you do the quick version, which there's a very quick version that people can do that they do, they just suck it down, do a back flush and they leave on you. Probably do one back flush and doesn't get everything and they suck that out.
Yeah, they're just taking the scum off the top and having, you could have a reduced capacity. Which could be an issue though.
So we just need to find, I need to find out how, how long this happened in years past because how often we had that take.
Yeah, according to Dylan, he, he claimed that he could go all year. But records would be somewhere.
Sounds like tanks have been steel and written twenty-five years.
Steel tank there, yeah. It's leaked because of groundwater with a combination of salt was in there.
Yeah. I don't, I don't know. The, again, the version I got from Dylan was that the tank was not old enough to be steel. It was a concrete tank. But I don't know when that was installed.
I swear there's a phone number that says range. From screen. Thank you. Grant, replacement of the bridge near four-wheel drive. Um, see. Anyway, um, I sent an email because Alex sent me an email from LCPC that um, he designed, that the application was complete to submit. Uh, they had hired, um, a consultant to work on doing the application. And his discussion with our emergency management suggested that he applied for not sixty percent design, which would be a forty-five hundred dollar match, but a hundred percent design. Um, so the match increased to nine thousand dollars. This is just a, so they're asking for a letter of support that the board can um, have the matching grant for nine thousand dollars. And it's just as a, an application, it's, uh, we're not committed to it at this point, but it's for the, um, enlarging and upgrading the bridge, uh, four-wheel drive on the North Wicket Road from the Baldwin Brook. It's been in our hazard mitigation plan. We originally applied for a hazard mitigation grant and they kind of turned us down and said you should go this route. So what's the board's pleasure? Wondering where we so we already committed to forty, I couldn't find in the minutes where we committed to forty-five hundred before. It's just that we gave approval to apply. Um, I was trying to find where we could find some money.
But it's a water project. Let's pull it out of class three.
Not a bad idea, it is.
I, I don't know what the actual
I used it though. I don't know.
Well, no, because
Or it's a bridge.
We'd be looking to match it in this fiscal year, wouldn't we?
Oh, no.
Well, I mean, still, we, we still have our reserve. That ten thousand dollars we set aside?
No, we don't. We spent seventy-five hundred. I just showed you last week. Spends for having the, uh, connections.
Better connections, right? Are we past a plan to down?
We committed seventy-five hundred.
So where we put the rest of the
Well, we We are, they're all committed and, and we committed ten thousand towards, um, grant matching. We spent seventy-five. And then Seth came in and wanted another nine last week, two for what this municipal plan to grant. Now they want another nine.
What I'm hearing is that we're not putting aside enough money to grant it.
No. But it would be, it, it would be next year. Um, that is a good idea though. It could come on a, out of the bridge maintenance budget. I didn't know what that is.
I think that was only, did we lower that like two thousand dollars or something?
Yeah. We dropped, uh, we dropped, um, I think for ten thousand and then it's the class three.
The class three, but the reason we dropped that was because at the time of preparing the budget, we had forty thousand left.
Yeah, but we still don't know what theme is going to cover and what they're not. It's all of the theme work is still in the meeting project and so it's still allocated for theme work.
You'll never know. You'll never know. Spider's web. I mean, if you're, you're pinpointing it to a little like a certain thing, you just gotta have faith is what I think. And it'll all work out in the end. Yeah, bridge repair rental, oh, we put rental and repair. Rental. Well, what's the board's pleasure? Do you want to hopefully find nine thousand dollars within our budget for, um, applying for the, uh, replacement of that bridge?
We can
By a hundred percent designs.
We can apply for that tonight and not, we can still back out of our commitment if we cannot find the money.
Yes.
I would make a motion that we move forward with the application. Uh, and should we not be able to find the money, we would back out of that time. Here.
Is that a second?
Yeah.
Waiting for the discussion.
All those in favor, say aye. Most, so parry. Uh, I wanted to do just a quick review of town meeting feedback of people. I mean, we all heard what the discussion was, um, get rid of Starlink. Um, what else?
Sheriff's budget needs to go back on page eighteen.
Yes.
I think it should go like Mr. Cotton suggested into services.
Yeah.
Yeah, out of our budget like we want it to.
Yeah, it's out of the
No, he, that's not what he meant. He meant he wanted it back in the select board budget under services with the patrol and the LCPC and Hardwood rescue. That's what he meant. Page eighteen.
But the way he stated it, he needed with the option of With the option of.
My only, my only recommendation would be we don't put it under the heading of La Moilaw County Sheriff's Department. We should just put. Police services or some generic, something that would leave it open for us to shop should we choose to.
You haven't done that before.
A hundred thousand times with an entire committee full of people.
It's not like law enforcement. Either way, whatever. Just something like that. Well, that would be patrol because we already paid the dispatch separately. They're two separate budgets.
Two separate entities.
Yeah. So you want to associate, it would be patrol?
I would just say law enforcement.
Well, we can come down to the details when we do the budget next year, but that was the recommendation that it goes back, basically it goes back in. I don't know, anyone heard anything else talking to people up there?
We can't get rid of the Starlink until we finally give. Up the primary.
Wait ten years.
Yeah.
We guys could shut down, we often, it's like consolidated. It's down, so.
And we're, we're, like I said at the meeting, we're obligated by the state, we have to provide this service. And consolidated won't push this, it won't power that. The very second that we can consolidate into one service provider that does phones, internet. And makes toast and whatever else they can do. I am all about paying one bill. For now, that's, that's the, this is the best we can do.
At one point, uh, the school has a line. I don't know how much it cost them, but they got it for free. They have a line that runs off, um. Comcast, because Comcast runs through on turn.
But they won't do a drop here?
Uh, if we wanna pay, I think they would, they might.
You know, we're gonna have a trench open between the schools in this building at one particular time in there.
Oh, you mean, but a nice, have a nice, when they go through, have a nice trench with a nice fiber optic cable running out.
There's gonna be a ditch.
Do we know what bandwidth is required for this service? The Starlink, so whatever service we need, do we know what bandwidth is required?
Still fifty megabits per second.
How many? So there's just a number of ways you can get that, I suspect, um. One would be a little bit of a satellite, like not satellite, just a, uh. Link between the school and here, the fibers do come through town. Um, getting fifty megahertz, megabits should not be a problem.
I know that, uh, high mowing seeds also through a line up there. To their.
Do you want me to ask the engineers about? I think that it would be worth finding out what the cost is. And also getting a firm deadline on when that every last mile initiative is actually going to touch this building. You know, I don't want to invest thirty five thousand dollars into something that's gonna happen in two years. I'd rather just. Pay the twenty four hundred dollars to. Our golden hatchet.
I I would love to talk with somebody, a professional that could talk about it. I I think it's not hard. Many different ways I used to talk about it, OSSU about, so they do have fiber going to the school. It's, uh, consolidated, but.
Um, it's consolidated, it's not Comcast.
I'd love to help somebody take a look at it.
Yeah, it's a T one line.
They, and how come they never offer to come here?
Because we're not a school. Yeah, I think, I think it would be interesting to find out the cost of accelerating that process.
I think the line basically is out there. On Route fifteen, it'd just mean bringing it up to here, connecting it on. Yeah, but what's going to be the cost?
I was talking to them, they took Comcast, they're consolidated, didn't have a fiber coming into town, but now they. They've been running fiber through town since then, um.
Is this area? Twenty, is this area just later through the twenty twenty nine rollout, or is that just the North Wookit area? I know my house was scheduled twenty twenty nine.
You mean, when will we get Northeast Kingdom to do the, the update thing?
Yeah, when are they gonna?
Funded, uh, should be before, uh, twenty twenty seven, it's a little late, but. I've tested before and there's just many options of getting, uh, small cells put up in the town. Uh, that covered the town very well and. Put the tap for a few months.
For less than a hundred and twenty a month?
The last of this stuff will be twenty dollars a month, so.
Starlink?
No, I don't have Starlink.
You say Starlink at home is one twenty, I thought that's what we paid. Yeah, so whatever, whatever the cost is, I mean, there is a. I do think that there is a value to. Following what the townspeople would like. There is obviously a large push for us to divest. From anything that has his name on it.
Does LCPC have any connection with resources that we could work with a bit? Cause I just don't think it's a huge problem getting really good water banned into this town. Me.
You've been working with the, the, the mobile fiber net, or?
No, uh, although we could talk to, no, it'd be Northeast Kingdom, but still.
Okay.
Even could be an independent point to point for the school. Um, could be a whole bunch of different ways.
Okay. I mean, I think, I, I'll, let me first talk to. Peter about what that would entail if that is. Something that could be, you know, considered, I. You know, money is going away. Oh, the engineer for the wastewater project.
Oh, oh, Peter, that, sure.
I think the discussion would probably be with one of the, uh. One of the CUDs about, about line would most likely would be the ones to, to run it. And that is not a process I've been directly involved in, uh, and I can ask a few questions.
I'll get back to the Northeast Kingdom folks, uh, with more serious question about. Let's get this office set up.
Yeah, and if there is legitimately an overhead line. That exists.
There are lots of.
And they will have, I mean, that's gonna be cheaper than anything underground.
Yeah.
Uh, so we really should be pushing. For that, I didn't realize that there was an option for us to. Have a line brought in. I didn't realize that there was fiber running along fifteen.
Yeah, they've been doing it all for the last year.
We put it in this summer.
But it's, but it's.
Can't remember what, EC something, yeah.
The rear contractor.
They're contracted subcontracting, they're in, just, but it's not operational.
Well, may not be connected to anything.
Well, it's not connected down by town, he'll turn. That's where it's gonna go in.
Yeah, so. Shortening this, um, yeah, we absolutely should explore the option should they exist because it just makes fiscal sense to pay. All other reasons aside, they've won one company.
I'll take into it a bit.
Anything else?
It was nice to hear words of support from the, the town meeting regulars.
Yes.
Has anyone heard anything about the school budget? Passing failing, failed at a two to one.
Apparently, there are only like seven, I think it's not seven. Towns in the whole state that hit.
Only nine. Nine that failed?
Yeah.
Wow. Compared to forty three, which means that OSSU is not gonna reopen their admin budget.
No one else in the district.
No one else in this district did a challenge to position this school board. And I do realize it's gonna take them five to six years to finally get it down to five districts. Just to get some of the personnel is. You gotta go and so they gotta put more power into. Just an incredibly difficult position that they're in now. Well, when you think of fourteen districts and you're cutting it down to five, thinking about the duplication you have.
Isn't it full of duplication? But that, that's not, this is not this, this not this meeting. I saw myself before, I get. Get yourself into deep water. Well, it's just that it's not this meeting.
Oh, in tech meeting updates, um, Michelle kind of touched on it. We attended the tech meeting recently and just to let you know that. There are going to be cuts to the town highway bridge program, structure grants, um. paving grants and. Also the, the town highway. Budget that they give us portally. So we're kind of banding together, um. Guns in the community, in the county and, and hopefully, uh. Talk to the legislators, like I said, they don't always wanna hear that. Don't cut me, give me more money, and you have to come up with a solution, but. When I was looking at some of these things, um. I think at this point, um. You know, with what towns have gone through and highway departments in terms of their budgets from flooding. They haven't been able to do it anywhere. They've just been, um. Trying to maintain what we have. Um, you know, we could do with a few less parking rods and bike and pedestrian facilities for a year or two while they. Get some money. I know they're probably. They're probably federal matches and that's why they want them, but, um, there must be something in there that. We could do without, that's kind of, I consider a parking rod kind of frivolous. Today, um, when they're gonna cut. Town budgets. Do you know anything about it anymore than I said?
Yeah, I'm sure, I think Alex's presentation at tech is probably, you put, I think what Linda's outlined are the, the, you know. Potential real cuts to some of those core transportation programs.
Question is, is the money that they're not using for. Matches, are they gonna try to, is that what they're using to try to save the education taxes? Try to use that money that they're saving on that rich or poor education.
I can't remember, do you know, Michelle, was it, are they? They're gonna have a deficit of what, three million dollars in the transportation fund? Was it three million, three something? Three hundred. Oh, or three hundred, hardly anything. No, no, I thought it was more than three million.
I'm not sure.
Well, it's a lot of money and they are trying to save money, um. In anticipation of the next couple of years where they don't have any money. They, you know, they get their funding from the gasoline tax. More people are using electric cars. They haven't dealt with how they're going to. Um, raise those fees from those cars using our highways, so.
You mean they haven't gone with the model that they're gonna have to go, which is the tax on less vehicles, like every. Mile they do based on mileage because they're paying for the highway as much as anyone else?
It's one of the reasons that the inspection stations went digital and all those mileage records are now on a file somewhere. Moving towards mileage tax and to your point, Kurt, I thought they had already as well.
Like seventy five dollars added a year fee. If you have an electric vehicle, you pay seventy five dollars a year, which is cheap.
You mean on your, um.
Electric vehicle.
But where do you pay it when you register?
Paid to the state when you. Register every year, you can give them seventy five dollars, which is cheap.
It's not ice the mile, it's like that.
It's just a flat fee. Because some of whom are combination gas and electric. Hybrid, hybrid, so that's why they say if it's total electric. Or combinations, it's just seventy five dollars a year.
Okay, the municipal wastewater connections, I, I filled them out. We got quite a few that have to be in by March seventh, but I didn't wanna send them without. Going over them with you. Um, basically the questions will be, um. So for the library one, I put in there that maybe we'll use it for cafe in the future, I'm not sure. Forty seven rail, the trailhead, I put in there, there's presently no water or septic. I have no idea would we ever have any future plans. And have they been there? Is this the time to do it? Do you want to put in a bathroom or?
It would be good to note that in the event that, um, if there's any designs for a future extension so that that could be.
How would you keep that from?
I, I didn't even plan it. I don't know what it looks like. All I need to tell them is, would we ever think about it? That's all, it's like.
I mean, you can turn it off, they can turn it off from the, like other places, they turn it off in the winter time.
Some places have self compost.
We looked into that and it was a nightmare.
So one forty school street is the historic schoolhouse, um, I put on there. Uh, yes, uh, we're interested in plans to renovate the town library and historical society. Correct. Two forty four school street, um, the bus barn. I put presently no water or septic. We have any plans that we would ever connect there?
We would, but again.
Don't we get some of the reserve anyway?
I'll never retain quite the time.
The garage, um, yes, I confirm the connection, but I need to put in the changes. And use.
Garage and fire.
Yeah, well, it's one, you know, one hundred. Town hall, I just put yes. To connect. Yeah, twenty eight railroad street. Changes, just what's here, is that, all right?
Is that, is that lot beside the post office always gonna be? Open lot, or are we ever going to decide to put a building there?
Well, I don't think, the plan was ever to put a building there, it was to put a park, municipal parking area.
I still think it'd be nice to put the fire department there.
It's not, we don't know. We only own a little square of it.
Will we own the whole thing eventually?
Um, actually, we, I got the final report today and I read it, Brownfield's. I'll send it to you.
Even if, even if we did, at that point, we would be able to, I mean, what's the advantage of putting the application in now?
You almost wanna do it with the building, so you know what you need.
Yeah, uh, yeah, just. Um, I'd, I'll have to make up one and answer, it's not one.
Is the, did we account for the house that has to be built as far as the town forest? For the grant, that, the single family home that has to be built.
They're not in the district.
That's outside the district. It might be worth. Thinking about that, a lot of there, um, noting if that exists, if you want a nut. I know Alan, it's not called a nut, but. The, the simple connection in the event, cause they, it is possible to do that, even if you don't have any.
Scum out and cap it off, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
The same for the bus.
The same for the bus, just so you're not boxed in for the future.
So what do you do on these forms?
Um, I would just note that for those particular properties, you wanna stub, but you don't.
How about a stub?
Is that in the right?
Right.
Yeah, just a pipe, no tank.
Yeah, they'll note.
Just a pipe.
The stub please.
Yeah. Peter will, I thought, he sees us, that, yeah, there's one stub up there and a stub over here.
There's the second location, except that one forty street. No, bus barn. And, uh, the parking area, I don't have that. And, uh, the parking area, I don't have that even.
Try that.
Cause I'm.
At the moment, I'll start this number.
Trailhead, I will take.
Yeah, this one, yeah, but I think you're talking about parking lot, um, fifteen.
Right.
So the two forty four school street is the bus barn.
Does the town have to add in the buyout, uh, that where they changed their minds with yellow building?
Oh, we don't know. They need to, you talk.
Okay, it's still in transition.
No, he, he pulled out.
He pulled out, okay. So he, he's responsible. Uh, he, he did not tell me that.
Well, he called you.
He was calling about where, where to send and submit the form to.
I don't need to, you know, he needed to be.
But it's his responsibility, not the town's.
Right. Yes, the yellow house on Route fifteen pulled down the buyout.
Would we need a, a stub by the rec field for anything potential there? If a bathroom might go there?
No, we could never.
That's a flex line.
I, I wouldn't even let her put a shed up. And move it up to the bus barn. That really gets flooded.
Yeah.
So I just clarified officially, we have two stub connections thus far, the, at the trailhead and at the bus barn.
And the parking area on Route fifteen, we don't have yet.
I mean.
We don't have.
Post office.
Oh, but we don't own that. We own the chances. We own the half of the parking area, but the park was closest to the book.
It's, but yes, a lot of.
Formal park. But we will own, presumably own the whole thing at some point.
We, I promised the voters that we did propose on that and we've been waiting for the brown fields.
Right.
It's been two years at least. A report came through my email today. I have not read.
I, my opinion is that that area will be used in the future to, in a substantial way, uh, whether it be EV.
It's going to be, because they did find containment. So I, I haven't rented a senior.
But you know, for electronic EV charging, uh, all kinds of things. I, I would just, historical note that the whole area was covered with the Wocatara House, the Open Hotel, uh, Livery Stables.
Rest of.
A huge building.
Burnt down.
Nineteen oh nine, yeah. I saw a report recently, nineteen oh nine, the whole thing burnt down.
Well, that burnt stuff is contaminated.
Um, so I looked briefly at the rules that you showed me as far as what we would be able to do, uh, on some of these buyout properties. Would it be worth? Would it be worth asking for a probably never used stub over here on, on Westovers in the event that we would do something there?
I don't think we could do a building.
Okay, bathroom.
Speaking of that, um, so in our next meeting, I was inviting the, um, well, the forest committee is really interested in maintaining some of that upper land and trails. And I said, well, the planning commission is interested. Two, I think that the, so I'd like the forest committee, the planning commissioner, the select board at the next meeting to talk together on plans together. Not everybody doing their own.
I have to bring two minutes.
You did. Just so, you know, we can talk through everyone's ideas of what's going on, um.
The better connection.
What you can do.
The, the grant that we've applied for, for better connections will deal with tying those pieces together if we get it, right, Michelle? Um, but you know, that will give us some money to.
It will be the lower part. It won't be the hills.
Right.
And I think the forest is mostly just stood in the upper land, but how to get there, can they park there and get, you know, to the rail trail from there. So it's all, I think everyone needs to talk now.
Right.
But I think that grant will help us pull together the town's opinions, uh, some expertise and, and a master plan that looks at the whole village more than we have.
So if they're taking input, this is a good time because then you can give that input to the, to the grant for the report.
Uh, how, related to the stub conversation, how, I was just trying to get the pulse of the select board here, just thinking aloud. We don't know how many opt outs we're going to get. We haven't hit the first deadline. We're going to probably do a second, mount road lanes. Should we put in, should we put in stubs at every property location just in case while we have the money for construction? So it's a lot easier if someone's system fails later and for them to hook up and it saves them money while we have money on the table.
The engineer could do it enough to get out of the roadway so they could eventually. If they wanted to.
Even if they opt out, but if they have to hook up later, it's going to cost them a lot less.
Does it make a difference if we connect the pipe in now or connect later to the main? Cost wise.
If it gets out of the roadway, it's a difference if you're trying to dig in Route fifteen or dig out of Route fifteen. They get out of the main roadway. It would make a difference. They would have to dig it up, main roadway.
Okay.
That'd be the difference.
Doesn't seem like it's a big cost to buy into the main pipe.
Yeah, as long as it doesn't jeopardize, you know, our ability to pay for the entire system, I think it would be a wise decision to stop at every address regardless of opt in, opt out. Uh, but as our last conversation, we're only talking about like, what, seven properties, eleven properties?
Yeah, it's gonna be less.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So if we're talking about seven stubs and the cost can't be, couldn't be enough to jeopardize.
It's just going to be the cost of picking up the road.
Yeah, and that's, that's a fantastic idea actually to, to get us out of Route fifteens right away. So we don't have to fly. Homeowners don't have to deal with flagging packages and roadway contractors and.
It's easier not to go get the permit from the state. You'll dig up if you have issues or go hook on or anything like that.
Don't quote me here, but I think if you want to dig up a state road, you have to be an AOT pre-qualified contractor.
It's, uh, it sounds about right.
So that, you know, that's.
Your dollars now for flagging, it's a huge, it's a huge investment. You're absolutely right. If there's money on the table and we can afford to do the ones that want to opt out.
Absolutely.
Better dollars right now. The next place where we.
So, some video updates. Oh, sir, you could have talked sooner.
Yeah, no, it's all good. Um, I just, I was supposed to bring the municipal planning authorization for signing the sign. That, um, you threw at the last meeting. Uh, I did not do that. So is it all right if I send that to Michelle to be distributed to, for signing? Uh, it's by the end of the match.
Oh.
So we could also bring it to the next select board meeting. Uh, but could I mail that or email that?
Yeah.
To be printed so that I can get it again. They sit to where.
We could do it now.
I have to go a little.
Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, that's fine. I'll just stop in and sign it.
Okay.
You guys have to sign that, um, one form that you are, you are, um, rules and write your.
We did, I went somewhere. Yeah. Sign it.
We did, we did. Need a little bit of that for follow up.
I know. Florida's going to make his, his boss famous, so.
Yes.
He's going to try.
That's got to ride out here.
Why you pushing to a jury?
You think I should do that?
I already did. You did. You was a funny bugger. You.
I was like, that. I tried to have you do it there during the week, so one hour before.
Yes, yes. Yeah, that was.
Those sexy. So, Karen.